This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order this, the regular town, I'm sorry, the special town council meeting, which is the motions meeting on the budget for the 2021-2022 fiscal year. I'm going to go right to the beginning of the agenda and do my regular announcements after the roll call. So please rise for a moment of silence. We'll now have the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, good evening. Fishbine.
Here.
Laughlin. Marone.
Here.
Morganstein. Chortel.
Here.
Tada. Testa. Zandry.
Here.
And Chairman Cervoni.
Here, Counselor Testa just logged in.
Okay.
Now I'll go through the announcements. Members of the public, please keep all of your microphones muted during the meeting unless you're the person asking a question. Also kindly keep your camera inactive unless you are speaking. This is for both your and our protection. The system does not deal well with multiple simultaneous speakers. The only audio from only one person will come through at a time. Therefore, please only speak if you have been recognized. I don't have a gavel. I don't need it. I have a mute button. And when we go back live in the chambers, I might miss this mute button. If we all aren't participating respectfully, I'll be forced to mute also that the person who has the floor can be heard. We'll now proceed to go through this agenda, which is going to be motions that have not, as of yet, been announced. The way we'll do this is we will allow counselors in some orderly fashion to present motions on the budget. Please let me know if you intend to comment by putting your comment in, I mean, by asking me in the chat bar, then I will recognize you in the order that you've notified me. The council will go first, the public after the council. First, we'll look for questions from those who are logged in digitally, and then I will go to those who are, who have dialed in with a traditional telephone. At this point, I don't see anybody dialed in with a phone. If you intend to comment, you must introduce yourself by stating your name and address for the record. I'm also going to point out some of the council rules, just in light of recent events during a meeting. We are going to consider each motion like we would an individual agenda item. So if a member of the public wishes to speak to an individual agenda item or to a motion tonight, you will be given three minutes to speak or question, and your questions are directed through the council chairman. That is consistent with Rule Four of our council rules. Also, for general information, when it comes to our Rule 15 regarding decorum in order, both members of the council and members of the public shall refrain at all times from rude or derogatory remarks, reflections as to integrity, abusive comments, and statements as to motives and personalities. And members of the public, all remarks and questions shall be addressed to the council through the chairman. There's going to be no individual canvassing of the council on these motions unless the chair clears it. Also, I sent an earlier, an email today earlier asking counselors that if you are going to make a motion on the budget for the ease of the clerks recording the motion, if at some point near the time that you make that motion, if you could email a draft to the clerk, that would be helpful. Thank you for your patience and listening to me babble. With that, we will go on to motions from the council on the fiscal year 21-22 budget. First up, Counselor Zandry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. I have, I have just one motion that I would like to make and have the council consider. I'll, I'll make a general motion, and then I guess if we have to tweak it, you know, as, as we go, that's fine. So I would like to make a motion to add $60,000 to the park and recreation budget, taking the funds from the $1.8 million rollover surplus in the cap and non-recurring account as part of an effort to allow them the capital expenditure to build a dedicated pickleball court at Harrison Park.
Second.
Moved and seconded. So if I understand your motion, Counselor Zandry, you're looking to tap the money that that's not allocated and unspent in the cap and non-budget. Am I correct to think that?
Yeah, what I wanted to do was, we know there's these funds left over. They were originally for capital projects that went unspent. There's a need for a capital expenditure that, that got, that got passed. And what I mean by pass is it, when Park and Rec came forward with their budget, there wasn't, there wasn't a need for this, so they didn't include it. Now that we've gotten to this point, there is a desire to try to move with this action, which is to build these dedicated pickleball courts. So I thought it only made sense to, you know, take the opportunity during the budget session to add the appropriate amount of funding for this capital expenditure from prior unspent capital expenditures, which is why I made this motion.
All right. If I may.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I was just going to ask you, Mr. Bose, if I may.
Yes, you may.
Am I correct to think that with this budget, we can't access that 1.8 million? However, you know, if we are going to access some pilot electric division money, that, that the way to get it would be to take it from the contribution that's being made by the electric division during this budget?
That's correct. So you would reduce the contribution, not the contribution in the revenue side, but in the transfer that we make to the cap and non-recurring fund by that $60,000. That way, everything stays in the general fund. You're reducing one portion of the expenditure, portion of the budget for the cap and non-transfer, which is, I believe, on page 23 of your budget books, and then increasing the park and recreation general fund budget by $60,000 for a capital item to be called a pickleball court or something, something to that effect.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I may.
I'm sorry, Mr. Zandry.
No, no, I just, I kind of wanted to maybe help this along. My, my entire intention of trying to do this is to use, use funds that are there so that we do not affect an increase in the taxes. And that's why I wanted to do it this way. If you're saying to intercept those funds, I'm totally good with it.
Right. So I think by doing it this way, you're going to short the electric division pilot by 60,000. But if we need that money in the next budget year, then that money is available to be allocated from that $1.8 million that's unspent. So if you'd like to amend your motion that way.
Sure. What surprised, I like saying I'd like to make that a friendly amendment, or how does that work? I would like to make that a friendly amendment, then.
And Counselor Morganstein, you had the second. Would you second the friendly amendment?
I will resecond.
Okay. Comment on this motion from Counselor Chortel?
Yeah, no, it was mostly what you said. I was just reacting to, I think, the fact that we'd have to start cap and nod, do it, and we can't access the money, but that's a way to get at it. And I support the motion. I think Kenny Michaels had sent an email, you know, we had all, Counselors Zandry and myself and Council Marone have been back and forth with him. And this, just so the public knows, this came from Kenny, where, and I know Jason was working with the pickleball league. Is it a league? I don't know.
It's a group. It's a pretty big group.
Yeah, yeah. I know you're working with them, but, but, you know, Counselors Zandry's number is solid. That's a number from Kenny. And Kenny, you know, was asked if he had a blank check, what would he do? And this is what he said. So I'm fully supportive of this. That's all I had to say. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'll just note for the record that several members of the public did reach out to me seeking support for pickleball courts. Several, not tons, but several. Mayor?
Yes. Both courts are used by the Lyman Hall tennis team. Shared courts, I think, is very appropriate. At this point, we, tennis is not able to be using Choate Courts, which previously had been used, but because of COVID, they aren't available at all. And I'm not sure that they ever will be again. So there will have to be considerable administrative review of this before I could promise that it, it would happen right at the Harrison Tennis Court.
I will say that I think we're redoing the tennis courts at Doolittle Park. Am I correct, Mayor?
That's correct. Those are being done now. There's a boys' and girls' tennis team. So they, they often, my knowledge, use both Harrison as well as Doolittle. Two of the courts, the new courts at Doolittle, will be lined for pickleball. There are total four courts there. The advantage of having courts lined for both pickleball and tennis is that obviously sharing allows for multi-use of an area that is beneficial, especially when court space can be short at various times of the year. But like I say, I would have to be really reviewing this before I could promise that it can be done as it's been presented.
Mr. Chairman, if I might add a little bit, I know that, you know, there's always a lot of this discussion about having dedicated courts. I think the scenario right now with having temporary or portable courts, or however you might want to assign them at, you know, at Harrison right now, I've gone down there. I've seen the number of people that, that use the pickleball courts. Now, to be fair, I don't go down enough to see how many people use the tennis courts. But right now, we've got 17 tennis courts in town. Now, the mayor is correct that right now, there's, there's 14 courts at Choate that are not of allowed use. I would be very surprised if we don't ever get an opportunity to use them again. We've historically had use of them through, through a shared and respected, you know, use between Choate, being a private entity in the town. I believe the reason that the restrictions have gone into place have been COVID-related. If there are any other reasons why we're not able to use them in the future, that would be new news to me and maybe addressed at that point. But there are, you know, Doolittle, Lyman Hall, and Sheen have four, four courts each. There's, there's Community Lake has two, and there, there are other courts in town that get used. When, when you look at the, all the information has been supplied by the people, by the players that they use these courts, there's a lot more use by the pickleball players in shorter periods of time. It services a lot more people than the, than the smaller numbers, singles or doubles, for, for an hour period of time on the courts. And, and, you know, I'm not going to go through the entire thing that Kenny Michaels sent, or that Mr. Daniel sent all of us, because it's pretty robust the way that it's, it's put out there. Many, many of the surrounding towns around us have gone and, and used up either brand-new space or reacclimated some of their tennis court space for this explicit use. People that have traditionally played tennis have come over to play pickleball. And so I think this is the right thing to do. I think it's the right time to do it. We have the funds to do it, and we have the, the ability to do it within, within a park that's already being used for this purpose. And I appreciate that ultimately it's going to be the mayor's review at the end of the day. But I think it's our duty and our responsibility to make sure the funds are there so that there is no, there's no situation where we're looking at it, you know, first thing in the season, and it's not April yet, we can't move funds around yet, and Park and Rec is tight on their budget, but we can't loosen up these other funds. Let's put the funds in there. The worst-case scenario is going to be like we do with many other departments. We'll be returning funds to the general, you know, general fund balance the end of the cycle. But I really hope that we've got the support here, because there's, there, I think the demand is here, and it would be the best thing to do for the people that are dedicated to being these players in these portable courts today.
Thank you. I think the next question or comment on this motion is from Counselor Tada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sorry, I lost my connection for a couple minutes there. I guess my question, I'm not necessarily opposed to this. You know, I'm hearing pickleball's becoming quite a popular sport. But I, I do, I would like to know where the $60,000 comes from. Because like the mayor said, if it's simply, you know, just, just painting lines on top of an existing tennis court and having, you know, multipurpose courts, that, that doesn't seem like it justifies $60,000. So I'm sure it came from somewhere, maybe the Park and Rec Department. But if anybody has any insight into that, I'm just wondering where the, that dollar amount came from.
It came from the Director of Park and Recs. I don't know, Counselor Chortel, do you remember if there was information provided with that number as to whether or not it involved paving and mounting nets and that sort of stuff?
Yeah, it was forwarded to the town council on April 19th from Kenny Michaels directly, and it was in response to an email I had sent Kenny on April 15th with Council Marone. So you can look at the attachment, or you can look at the, I would look at both, and then the body of Kenny's email from the 15th. So it was sent to the, the council has had it for, for a little bit here. And he goes into, I'm not going to, I mean, I could read it. It's pretty long. Kenny goes into a lot of detail about what, what the work would be and why, you know, the estimate. And he basically saw it between 50K and 100K, and that's why he thinks he can do, he thinks 60 is a approximation of what he can do it for. So he was kind of going on the low end. That's, that's, that's the CliffsNotes version. I don't know how much more you want me to get into, or I can read forward it to the council if you, if you'd like, or forward it to Deb or something.
No, I'm sure I have it in my, in my budget folder. I'll pull it up while, while people are still talking. But I just didn't know, that's, that's not for brand-new courts, though, right?
No, this is not, these are not new court, yeah, no, this, this is to sort of repair, as the mayor said, and everyone else. These courts are multipurpose, and they're, they're dual-use. So this is to really do a really good job at, I guess it's Harrison, to, to seal the, seal them and repair them. It's not putting, it is not putting in new courts just for pickleball. It's not that. That, that would be, according to Kenny, hundreds of thousands of dollars. That is not being asked for at all.
Yeah, so it's not like what's going on in Doolittle right now. Okay, I'll, thank you. I'll look up that email in my, in my folder while we're talking. Thanks.
Next up, Counselor Marone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to go on the record to say that I agree wholeheartedly with Councilman Zandry. You know, if we don't put it in the budget now, it's not going to happen in this fiscal year, or there's no chance it's going to happen this fiscal year. So even if the, you know, gets reviewed by the administration, they determine that it can't happen for whatever reason, we should at least have the money set aside so it could happen. So, you know, without the funds, it'll never happen. So just want to put in my two sentences in support of the idea. Thank you so much.
Counselor Laughlin?
Thank you. Sorry, everybody, that a late, unexpected soccer juggling. And I have to leave for that same reason. And if it's necessary, I can, I can try and look back around later. And I think I figured out the gist of it based on the conversation, but I know there was a friendly amendment. Would it be all right if the, the whole motion as it stands now was read back, partially for my benefit, because I missed the original one, but, because I heard that there was an add-on?
In summary, it's to move $60,000 of the money, the pilot money being contributed in the 21-22 budget by the electric division over to a special revenue account in Park and Rec dedicated to pickleball?
Okay. No, it's, it's great. I think it's, it's, has been increasing demand in town. These are exactly the type of funds to use for it. And, and I trust the administration with the Park and Rec Department will figure out the best way to implement that, and this will make sure that the funds are available for it. So, thanks.
All right. That's all I see from the council on this motion. The chat bar is a little cluttered. So forgive me if I'm missing or skipping someone. Any members of the public wish to comment on this motion? All right, seeing none. And currently, we have nobody who has dialed in. So, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishbine.
Yes.
Laughlin.
Yes.
Marone.
Yes.
Morganstein.
Yes.
Chortel.
Yes.
Tada.
Yes.
Testa.
Yes.
Zandry.
Yes.
And Chairman Cervoni.
Yes, motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. The The next request for a motion was from Counselor Tada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to start out by saying, I, overall, I think this is a good budget. A lot of the, the mil rate is going down. Good thing. But I know that because of revaluations, some of the dollar amounts for some of our taxpayers, particularly on the residential side, could be going up because their property values are, are now worth more than they were five years ago. So with that in mind, I'm going to just go over my proposal here. So in this budget, there is a rare non-recurring expense of approximately $1.5 million, and that is the 53rd pay week. So we see this increase in the salaries and wages lines of most departments. And in order to offset this rare non-recurring expense, I propose that we appropriate an additional $1.5 million from the reserves un-audited fund balance, which would be added to the mayor's proposed 6.4 million. So that is line 49010. It's on page nine of the budget book. According to the CAFER, the town's overall general fund balance increased from 26.14 million to 28.57 million, which was a 9.3 increase, 9.3% increase. This is taxpayer money, and it's right to give it back to them in the form of tax relief, in my opinion. So using 1.5 million of the surplus towards a reduction of approximately 0.30 mils is an easy way to give money back to the taxpayer. When the 1.5 million is added to the 6.4 million already appropriated in the proposed budget, the total of budget line 49010 would be 7.9 million. This is not going to align with amounts appropriated in prior budget years, notably 7.4 million in 2021, and 7.2 million in 1718. Also of much importance is the fact that this revenue line is never used in its totality, or even close to it, going back about 20 years. For example, of the 6.2 million budgeted in this line in 1819, only $140,000 was used. Of the $6 million budgeted in 1920, none was used. So based on history, my proposed increased amount of 1.5 million will not even be touched. So by us budgeting this line with an additional 1.5 million, it will provide tax relief for those whose dollar amount taxes will rise this year based on revaluation, and it will result in an actual dollar amount decrease for most commercial properties, as well as residences whose property values decreased or remained flat. It will also help to lower taxes on the personal property side, helping businesses and vehicle owners. So therefore, I move that we appropriate an additional 1.5 million from the reserves audited fund balance for a total amount on budget line 49010 of 7.9 million dollars. Thank you.
Without a second, the motion will fail.
I'll second it.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second, yeah.
All right, the motion's been seconded. Mr. Bose, am I correct to think that some of that increase in the fund balance has been allocated by the council already? I believe we already allocated some of that when we did the Board of Education reserve. We call it the 2%. So that took care of some of that money already. And was there a Board of Education big give-back?
Let me get to that in a minute, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, but I just have a question for the council. The amount of 1.5 million for the 53rd pay date, I, on the general government side, it's, it's about a half a million. I don't know where 1.5 million came from. So if someone can help me out with that, I'd appreciate it first, and then maybe address the other issues.
May I, Mr. Chairman?
Please do.
I was not told that by you, Mr. Bose, but I was given those numbers by a trusted source on the council. So I could have double-checked with you, I probably should have. But even if it's, that was the number I was given. I was told 1 million for Board of Ed and 500,000 for General Government. If that's not accurate, you can certainly correct that.
I don't believe, I don't, I'm looking for a calendar here. We don't believe, like Deputy Tim Senna and I, that there is a, an additional pay date for the school system. We're, we're looking at, we're looking at a calendar now. So it's like, because, yeah, they are paid in a bi-weekly basis. Well, let us, let us look at a calendar quickly, and we'll get right back in a few seconds.
Mr. Chairman, can I just make a comment that might assist, sort of while this is going on?
Sure.
Because what I'm wondering about is, if any of this were to apply to a Board of Ed expense, we might also have to jockey around money attributing the million dollars, for example, to their budget. Just, so this is maybe a thought as we go forward, when you try to figure out how this could be done, if we want to do it. That's all I wanted to add for that at the moment.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may address that point by Mr. Testa, I don't think you'd have to change anybody's expenditure budget Board of Ed or account, because it would already be in there. So you don't have to allocate it to that. It's just a matter of how the council would like to try to pay for it, if you will. Yeah. Yeah, and we're not seeing an additional pay date for the schools. Now, it's not a pay week. I know that is sort of used synonymously, but there's just an extra Thursday as of July. Because July 1 of 2021, as well as June 30 of 2022, both happened to fall on Thursdays. Which is the pay date for the general government. I don't see anything in, with regards to the schools, with regards to that. So I, I apologize. I'm not, I'm not seeing it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. So if my, if my information was not correct on the 53rd payday, at least for the Board of Ed side. Um, the motion doesn't change at all. So I would still move that we appropriate the additional 1.5 million. To that budget line of 49010 to make that 7.9. Like I said, historically, we never come close to even using that. So I don't think it really has an effect on. It would have a, a mill rate effect. It would be a 0.30 mill rate decrease, again, if I math this correctly. You know, certainly, certainly maybe is not. But by, you know, we talk about a lot every year about how there's a lot of money in the general fund and, you know, how we kind of get that back to the taxpayers and. You know, the, the CAFER showed that there was a lot, that there was a large surplus last year. I think it was an increase of 9.3%. And so I think by, by putting in additional 1.5 million into that over what the mayor had already put, which was 6.4. Historically speaking, going back 20 years, we're never even going to touch it. And I think that it's something that we can do that will have, you know, tax relief, a dollar amount tax relief to those people who. Because of revaluation are still going to see an increase even though the rates going down. So even without that 53rd pay week, I would still keep the motion the same.
Counselors, Zandry, I presume Counselor Testa, you're all set. Counselors, Zandry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, yeah, just to kind of add, add a little bit to this, just for the discussion point. You know, we, we've had this discussion prior, in prior years about that designated reserve. You know, and, and just to kind of emphasize the point, designated never ever means spent. It's always put in there to bolster up the budget so that we don't have to. Bring in more on revenue lines and for assumed expenses. If, if we didn't have those monies available to designate, we would probably have to try to raise more money coming inbound. In order to meet estimated spends. And we probably end up surplusing more initially. Last year, when we, we passed, we made changes to the budget and we pushed hard to get it down to a mill rate, a flat mill rate. No changes to the mill rate. There was, there was a lot of resistance to it. And even with the pandemic, we are, we are running ahead on the budget that's currently going to close in about, what is it, 50 days or so? And of course, it'll be months before we get final numbers on it. But the projections based on the reports that were given by Mr. Bose show that budget, which there was a lot of angst about, coming in under budget. So therefore, we'll be surplusing out of a year where we held the mill rate flat. So this is, this is another stretch. This is another opportunity to designate more funds. To backstop or prop up what we're trying to do in running the town. And take that pressure back off. Of the taxpayer. So I, I'm hoping, no, we, we took a risk. And then we got hit with a pandemic. And, and we are in good shape again. So when we talk about, gee, you know, it's shaky, there's a concern, I don't want to do this all the time. I, I get all of those points. But we, we're now at the point of basically proving out the experiment. And we have, and we are not doing anything super risky here except allocating more designated funds. If we actually go into them or go into them a little bit more than we may, may otherwise anticipate. Then at least we know where the threshold is. For all the years that we've got designated reserves, there's never been a year that I've got that's been under $4 million. And my records go all the way back to the 2003 year. The largest bucket we ever actually spent out of all of that goes all the way back to the 25, 2005 and 2006 year of 1.7 million. That was a year that we designated 6.9. And I'd like to call out the fact that that was over. Doing some fast math, 15 years ago. So you can inflation adjust that all day long. We designated 6.9 that year and used 1.7. So every other year's fallen under that. And we are pretty flat, you know, we, we jockey around. We go between 6, 5, 6, 5, 6, 5. The prior year was 7.4. Coming up from 6.4, pushing it a little higher, a little closer to eight, isn't any different than the years we were running around 4.3 and then jostled up to 7.2. I think it's an opportunity to see how, how tight, how much more tightly can we get this good ship running? And I, I'd like to see some consideration for this support on this because I really do think it leads to a better opportunity to kind of tighten up what we do. And, and keep the pressure low on the taxpayers. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Laffin.
Thank you, and I apologize because I do have to leave soon. I'll, I'll try and keep in touch and somebody can let me know if I'm needed. But so I have, I have a clarification, a question. What we, what we ended up doing last year was different than this because we ended up taking from cap and non-recurring last year. This is going for the general fund increase, if I'm hearing it correctly. So my question then, Mr. Bose and the mayor, but Mr. Bose primarily, if we are, if we end up allocating. An additional one and a half million from, for revenue purposes from that fund. How would that affect how the credit ratings and all that other stuff? How are we looked at? On that? What, what are the consequences of doing this, aside from whether we end up using any of it or not? Which is, which is a totally different thing that we, that's more internal for Wallingford. But what happens more macro?
Well, more macro. The credit rating agencies like the C municipalities have. 10 to 15% of their budget in the classification of fund balance that's called unassigned. Through the years, it's been called different things, but it's just basically the amount of reserves that are above and beyond everything that has been legally bound. As of your balance sheet date of June 30. And actually, our unassigned fund balance from 2019 to 2020 actually decreased by approximately $510,000. That is summarized on page 87 of the June 30 of 2020 AFR.
So that's four years.
All those, all those other categories, all those other categories will probably be spent over a matter of time. So this is, the unassigned, a simple definition would be what the town has in the future to provide flexibility. And of course, you want that number to be relatively solid. 10% is certainly not, not a bad figure. And you could probably do some quick math and, and we're, we're, we're under that number now, that, under that 10%. Now, how that's going to shake out with credit rating, and it's not just for credit rating agencies, it's just for, just for the future. Because what would happen if now that, that the $6 million or $7 million does not get refunded? That unassigned fund balance would still be, you know, in the $16 million range or something like, something like that. But in the budget process following that. That $6 million or $7 million that you're not going to have to help you balance that budget. Or, and so now you're going to have to have a much more difficult decision. Of, of replacing 6.4, 7 million dollars, whatever the number happens to be. With taxes and/or spending decreases versus previous budget. To sort of get that, you know, squared up. So that's, it, it, it hampers you going forward. And in government, local government, and you folks know this, but I, I still have to say it for the record. Every municipality, we, we are kind of criticized a lot by the public. And you guys hear this, I'm sure you do. That you guys don't really plan, it's, everything is one year, one year. And, and there's some truth to that. We, we do suffer from some myopia, the one-year myopia. But. We try to take at least a couple of year look at this by not using stuff until it's audited. And to try to stay within certain parameters that the folks who work with this stuff every day recommend. So that's, that, that could be the effect, Mr. Laffin. That's what I'm saying. We, as far as the rating, and the ratings are, they involve so many different factors. It's also management of the fund, you know, and frankly, to be honest with you, unless you're taxing people to death. Taxes has never been brought up at any rating meeting that I've ever had with Moody's or Standard and Poor's. Which are the two largest by far rating agencies for municipal credit. So I, I know that sounds a little bit weird, but one would think that the credit rating agency would say, hey, let's pay attention to how bad taxes are going up. But they, they seem to focus on, look, it's, they know it's a local decision as to what the spending is going to be. Now, how do you add it to that? That's what they're more interested in. Does that help, Mr. Laffin? I hope, I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, a little bit. So it, so they're not going to look at us within the year and be like, well, you're running, you're running $8 million out of your, your, your budgeting $8 million from your savings. So we're going to drop you another level. So they're not going to say that, or they are going to say that?
Well, it, it would be a factor that certainly would not be in our favor. Now, if there's a few more others, then there could be a slight, a slight drop, of course.
So, but, and so you talked about the threat, though, of, of, you know, if we, if we spent it all, then what would we do next year? But we've, and, and right, so we've spent it, so it's gone down over the last three to four years, right? But, and, and it's been a while since before that, that it's gone down. But the chances of, of $8 million being spent out of that. Based on even the last 10 years or four years of those, it goes down. It's not going to be $8 million. And I'm not saying I'm in favor of it, but I'm, I'm just trying to say like, I, I just can't see that point happening either, though.
Mr. Chairman. Councilman, members of council. Credit rating agencies, in my experience, look at trend. It's not a one-year thing. It's what is the style of management over a period of time? And in my opinion, as we show more and more of a trend of using more and more money from reserves in order to handle operational costs. That is not a good trend. Because it exposes you to losses that then, then your per capita income, then the basic wealth of the town. Comes into play as far as the ability to cover those things with, you know, more serious taxing hurts. That's where we are weak. We do not have that kind of backdrop of high per capita income. As some other communities that also have high ratings do have. So we're an anomaly in some ways as to our rating, given that we're, we're not a high per capita income. And that's because of. Being cautious about how we manage year to year. And the more we depend upon reserves to fund an operational expense. That's, that is not going to be looked at as favorable.
Counselor Chertel.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Just to follow up on, on Mr. Laffin. Mr. Bose, just a quick, first of all, congrats on, I think, your last motions meeting here in Wallingford. So congrats. Going out with a, going out with a bang. When we say 10 to 15% unassigned, are we talking 10 to 15% of the overall budget or just the general government budget?
The entire general fund, which includes schools.
Okay, got it. Okay. Have, so when the credit rating went down in what, in 2018 or 19, I think?
2019.
Did we see, and have we bonded anything since then?
Uh, no, but we are putting together a bond sale right now. I don't know if we're going to be able to get it in before my departure, but I will continue to work with the mayor and with our deputy, Tim Senna. As, as much as he need to, to wrap that up. But we might, just to let you know, we are looking at a potential refunding of some bonds. We spoke a little bit about that at one of the. At one of the meetings, but right now, there's one issue that we, we could have a, a refunding. Which is sort of like a refinance. They use the word refinance, refunding, but it's almost like a refinancing of a mortgage, if you will. But so we're, we're looking at that now. There's not going to be millions of savings. If we're in the 40 or 50 thousand dollar range over a couple of years, that'll probably be it. So we might take it, still be able to take advantage of that. With our rating and whatnot. We would need a refunding ordinance, by the way, to do that. So you might see something coming down the pike in the future and I'll have, you know, we'll have harder numbers for you then. But at this point in time, yes, we are somewhere around the $6 million mark for issuing the debt as we spoke about a little bit. During the budget workshops as well as a potential refunding.
Okay, I, I'm just trying to sort of look, because I feel like there's two parts to the equation. So we have a business model that we try to keep a certain amount of money unassigned, as we've talked about it. Unassigned fund balance, we don't want to touch it. And that's to get a good bond rating, to pay presumably less interest when we bond. But what are we getting on the other side of that equation? So, so, so for example, I guess what I'm, what I'm trying to get my head around is. If the unassigned fund balance was 7% instead of 10 to 15. Then on the other side of the equation, so how, how does that affect the bond rating? I mean, is it, you know, what are we, what are we getting for that versus the 10%? I'm trying to, like, can you see what I'm saying? I'm trying to, what's the risk reward? Like, is it? Maybe it's worth it to give some money back to the taxpayers. I don't know. I'm just trying to understand the whole equation.
Well, the, the risk reward, as you put it. Would be obviously another decline in the, in the overall credit rating. Wallingford would always be able to sell its bonds. It's just that we'd be selling bonds more expensively with more interest over time. I mean, Wallingford is well thought of in the bond market. I, I don't see that changing in the, unless something. Really, really bizarre happens over the next few years. And I'm pretty sure the folks, the nine of you are not going to let that happen. I, I don't know about future CEOs, but I know this current one, I have no idea what his plans are, but I, I'm pretty sure the 10 of you won't let that happen. But, but bottom line is that, and, and it really depends on what's happening in the markets. Right now, there tends to be a, a movement towards more quality, higher quality municipal bonds in that market. In times of instability, which I think we still are. There's always kind of a rush to quality. Now, does, so in a nutshell, I think we probably end up maybe. 25, maybe 25 basis points or more, less interest over the life of those bonds, which is a quarter of a percent. Maybe it's much, it's a third of a percent on the average for those years of the bond issue. And sometimes, however, you know, if, if, if there's nothing in the market and there's a demand out there for Connecticut Muni bonds. Then there, there always is, by the way, there's a strong market for Connecticut Municipal Bank. Then you might see that shrink to maybe 15 basis point to 20 basis points over the life of those bonds. So, and we always do a competitive sale, so we're always out there. Trying to make these guys and gals sharpen their pencils. So it's, it's difficult to say what the result would be, Mr. Chertel. But bottom line is, I, I think you have to look at it from more than just a credit rating perspective. You have to also look at it from the perspective of how much flexibility does, do the 10 leaders of the community have when it comes to making financial decisions? And frankly, I think that's just as important as, as your credit rating.
Mr. Chairman and Counselor Chertel, there's another factor here. To Mr. Chairman and uh Counselor Chertel, there's another factor here. And that is a reassurance to the public that we are doing a good job managing their assets. If we have a bond rating that continues to fall, that, that is not going to inspire confidence or trust. Now, some people pay attention to that, some don't. But I think most people in town are well aware that Wallingford is known for being a good uh trustee over public funds. But when we're looking to fund or even increase funds every year for operational and other costs, but we don't charge as much in taxes, how long can that continue? It, it defies logic that that continues and continue for a long period of time. It's the steady, it's steady new revenue coming in that allows the payment of amounts that steadily go up. You know, it, I think all of us realize when we go out and buy things, if, if the costs of things steadily go up, we're, we're, we expect that. But when the costs are going down, there's always a question in your mind, well, what's happening here? Are they going out of business? What's going on? Well, government should make every effort to maintain the trust and confidence of the public, and some of that is supplied by what outsiders, credit rating agencies, auditors, others from outside with expertise, how they view us and our management in general. So that, 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 that is worth its weight in gold, and once you don't have it, it'll be a long time before you get it back. Because no one wants to feel that the value that their municipality represents has declined.
Understood, I appreciate that, but I, I, I think we're talking degrees of difference. I, I don't think the choices between going from you know, sixteen million and assigned to zero. I think the choice is between going from sixteen million and assigned to fourteen point five million and assigned potentially. I think that's, and I'm not saying that's good either. I mean, I'm, I'm just, I'm just trying to, you know, this, I just heard this motion when you did, so I'm just trying to wrap my head around it. I totally hear what you're saying about stability and, and the credit rating, I completely respect that. Um, but again, I think it's, it's not this, you know, it's doesn't, if you do it one time, doesn't mean there's, there's a blow up the whole system. I, I don't, I don't, I don't know. Um, I, I, yep.
Just, just one, one uh rejoinder, and that is we, what we're showing is an increase in our dependence on one-time revenues. That's, that's a direction. We're not bringing it down. When we had high amounts, we made efforts to come down off of those amounts and showed a willingness to say, well, we're going to have to make sure that this doesn't become a pattern that drives us deeper and deeper into dependence on basically not, non-returning revenue or potential for. We're, we're not coming down on what we're, we're actually increasing the amount that we're dependent upon. And that shows, that shows a direction.
That, I guess my question, but then how is it that we typically don't spend most of it? I guess that's what I don't understand then. How come there are so many years where we, or at worst, we spent, you know, we, we assign uh while I'm looking at some numbers here, you know, in 2016, 17 fiscal year, we assigned 4.2 million from the general fund, we spent 1.4, okay? Uh, we ran a deficit, same thing the following year, we're 7.2, we went up to 7.2. We spent 1.5, almost 1.6. But even in those examples, with vast majority of that money, we're not spending, and then there's a number of years from 2010 through 2015, we assigned 5 million, 5.3, 4.5, 4.3, 4.3, 4.3, and we spent, we put it all back. So I'm, is that because of the, we, we underestimate the tax revenue? Do we get more grant money? I mean, so I just feel like there's actually a really good track record most years where we, we don't spend the money. So it's, it's hard then to hear, well, we can't go beyond what's in the budget because it's going to show, and what does that say for to the marketplace? And what does that say when we tax, when we tax people on it? And I, and I guess, and I guess what's really hard is, is to have this pile of money that sits there, and there's all the things we can't have, whether it's fireworks or this or that, but the money at 10%, that's got to sit there. That's hard.
But, but it should be hard. We're, we're managing other people's money. Having everything they might want to have is not, is not a good way for anyone to function, private business, individual, or government. Our duty is to provide what is really necessary, and if we have money left over every year, that's exactly what could happen. That's not free money because we didn't spend it. That's the base from which to be good trustees and allow that to continue to provide a stability. Wallingford is, is recognized as having reasonable taxes. Maintaining that, what is wrong with that? But that takes work to maintain that, because the more you push the edges of that, the more it becomes vulnerable. And now you, you start getting into the potential for either fewer services, or you're going to have to have serious tax increases. It, it's, it's that management that keeps a balance. Without that, you're either going to go, what? You're, you're either going to worsen, or with luck, you'll get more luck, money in one year, and so then you'll, your bacon will be saved. But there's, it, it's not free money. It's, it's a reassurance to everyone that should we have a real emergency, we have the capacity to deal with. It's telling the public, we make tough decisions, we're not spending everything we can spend because we're worried about the next year, the next decade, or whatever it might be. You know, it, it's, it, it's not a single year, you've got to look at it as multi-horizons. And just like the pandemic came out of nowhere, and now federal government's providing all of these millions of dollars. Well, how is that going to be paid back? And now they're talking about higher taxes to pay it back, and no one wants to hear about higher taxes at the federal level, you're going to have to pay back billions of dollars. There's, it's not sustainable. So I'm just saying at the local level, we can't do that. Maybe they can fool around with it at state or, state or federal levels. We don't have the latitude to do that. We're far more accountable to the average person, given our closeness to everyone, and we have a duty as trustees to handle this in a reasonable and, and even cautious manner. That's the duty of a trustee.
Understood. I, I respect that. I, I appreciate that. I just think that there are some investments we could have made along the way that wouldn't have compromised our financial stability, and I think COVID, the lack of technology brought it out with COVID. I mean, I think people could have been working from home if we had remote work capabilities at Town Hall, and I, we could go on and on. Um, you know, I don't know how I feel about this motion, because I, I, I basically agree. It doesn't sound like it, but I agree with a lot of what the mayor is saying. But I also hear Counselor Todd's perspective. I appreciate Counselor Todd putting this out here, and I, I think we're always, you know, whenever we try to do these things, it's always presented as this, again, I'll say it again, a black and white choice. Uh, no one's talking about spending all the money. It's talking about spending a little more than we usually do, that we probably won't spend anyway. Um, but again, the mayor's point, it's more complicated than that. I understand that. So I'm still processing all this, but thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselors Andrew.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so you know, I, I, I kind of would like to, to circle back on some of the things that Counselor Chertel was talking about, because it, because it leaves, it leaves a lot of, a lot of stones overturned, but you know, and, and we got to take another look at it. So, you know, the concern here is allocating an additional 1.5 million dollars. Well, if you go back to 2016, 2017, we allocated, designated, we designated reserves of 4.2 that year. And we actually consumed 1.4 of them, and nothing happened to us. Our bond rating didn't change. The net, the very next year, we allocated, we, for, we designated, I keep saying the word, we designated for use an allocation of three million dollars more. So not only did we not return all of the money the year prior, we actually upped it three more million dollars, and we consumed 1.5. And nothing happened. Then we went and designated 6.2 and only used 140 of it. Then we designated 6 million, returned all of it, and then added 2.4 million dollars to the bucket. I think that was the year, 1920. And Mr. Bose can correct me if I wrong, if I'm wrong, that may have been the year that our bond rating got cut. So I don't know what the magic is that makes them look at us and one-year favorites and one-year not. But we've heard what the change is in, in, in the um the borrowing rate. It's, it's a quarter of a percent. And I'm not trying to poo-poo that like it's a tiny amount of money, because it does add up when you're bonding it out. But what, what we have to understand, and the mayor is absolutely correct when he says that we need to be good stewards of this money, that goes on both sides of the discussion. That goes on the side of before we tax it and take it away from the people as well. So I think if we've got an opportunity to kind of hold things in place, we, we should, we should be taking a look at different options for that. I'd like to ask Mr. Bose a couple of additional questions. Um, when, when we talked about you, you used the word refinancing some of the bonds, and I, I know that was to make it an easier way to understand it. When, when we went and we reissued these bonds, what was the reason to go back out and re, refinance or reissue them? Were, were, was it because we had paid some down and we were going to borrow another bucket? We kind of balled the bucket all up together, and we basically did a single reissue? What was the, what was the impetus to go in and do that?
Uh, well, we haven't done it yet. We are, we are analyzing it with our consultants as well uh to see if that is, but a, a reason, if you want me to just be a little theoretical, if that's okay. Uh, a, a reason to do it normally is because as you're towards the end of a bond amortization period, almost like they kind of work opposite the way your mortgage does. Uh, if you have a conventional fixed rate mortgage, every payment you make, that's the same amount, flat level. More and more each month is going towards principal, right? Uh, with a bond issue, uh government bonds are a little bit different. Uh, if the traditional yield curve, where you're paying a little bit less at the beginning, more towards the end of the bond life, uh that's called a traditional yield curve, if you will. Uh, and if you get there towards the end and rates have either come down or remained low, so I'll use the term remained low, because they have been low uh for the last eight to 10 years, eight, nine years at least. But now you get to the period where we might have bonds out there. Um, and I don't have this, the, the figures to, to make front of me, I apologize. But we have some issues that have a, a few years left on their lives, three and three quarters, four percent for the last year or two of their, or three of their um, um existence. So when that happens, then you try to refund those bonds uh at a lower rate uh of interest. So it's almost like you're, um, and you will still pay them off in the same amount of time, by the way. Uh, that's something that we've always done. So if the original bond life was, let's say, uh 15 years, and we've got four years left, we will refund those bonds and still pay them off within four years, but you're paying back less interest.
Right.
So that's sort of how that works.
Right, and it almost sounds to me as, you know, again, I mean, just using people's personal credit scores, because they probably understand that better. You know, if, if you go from, I don't know, something in the low eight hundreds and you dip into the, the mid seven hundreds, you know, if, if the interest rate on things that you borrow is, is uh, it changes a quarter of a point, it ends up costing you more. But if you have the opportunity to move from one car loan to another, and they drop the rates because rates overall dropped, you're still in better shape despite the fact that your credit score dropped. So basically, in a very generic discussion, the way you just output it, even though we, we, our bond rating went down because they reassessed us at a lower level, the rates in general dropped, so we're not paying more because of the change. We are paying less because rates dropped. So we're, we're in the enviable position of, gee, it's too bad we got nicked a little bit on the rating, but the overall market dropped anyway, so we still benefited from a reduction. Maybe we just didn't get that last little quarter point, but it didn't cost the, the, the people any more money. It actually ended up being less money because the market favored the change. Is that true?
Uh, it's, that is relatively accurate. I, I won't say that the rates dropped uh so much as that i- if you'd allow me to use the phrase, the rates remained relatively low, uh because they have been low. And frankly, uh, I don't know how much more they could drop, to be honest with you. And we are at that point in the amortization payoff, or the payoff schedule, let me just use that word, uh whereby some of those bonds had a higher interest rate because they were at the tail end of that. And they were more, uh, when we sold those bonds, the traditional yield curve uh was sort of in effect, just, which is a good thing, because it's easier to understand. You pay lower interest in the shorter, in, in the, in the earlier years of the life of a, a, a bond issue, and you pay it higher as, as you move through time. Uh, that sort of makes sense to everybody, certainly makes sense to me. Uh, but so that when we have those last few years, or five years, or whatever that period is, and those interest rates are uh higher. Uh, and if the condition, if the rates in that market conditions have stayed relatively low, which they have, we would benefit from that automatically. Uh, how much we would benefit, obviously the rating has something to, would have something to do, do with that, of course. So your answer is partially right, uh and my answer is partially right, if, well, our statements, if you would allow me to say that.
No, it, it makes sense. So I, I, I have another follow-up on, on another point that was made. So I, I understand why we, why the, the 10% of the uh, they try to, you know, the, the rating agencies and so forth, they look at, they, they want to have us have a 10% of the unassigned balance, you know, available, because that makes it the most favorable thing. But my question to you is as follows, and maybe I'm looking at it too generically. So from a business standpoint, I, I take, when I'm doing projects, um, I, I look at what's my biggest contingency on a project, and if, so first off, I do the entire project and I want a 10% contingency. But then I also look at the factor of what is the biggest contin, what is the biggest line item in my entire budget of things that I'm doing? That if it completely fails, is going to cause me to start eating that, that, that contingency money up. And I'm using the term contingency to kind of make it be corresponding to why the rating agencies want us to keep 10% of the unassigned balance of the whole entire budget. But I question, do they actually do that? And here's why. The Board of Ed is 106 million dollars, almost 107. They don't come back, there is no emergency that has ever occurred that they come back and go, we need another 10 million dollars, like we need that 10% contingency against our budget because we, we forgot about something or something critically went wrong and we need more cash. So to me, we're looking at the 70 million dollar portion of the budget that is not the schools, the municipal side of the budget. 10% of that, 70 million dollars, would be seven. Why do they not look at it that way? Why do they take Board of Education, which becomes a static figure after it's funded, and say, gee, town of Wallingford, you really ought to have 17 million dollars of unassigned because of a two-thirds, uh not, yeah, two-thirds is even more, almost 70% uh entity that is never coming back to you within a budget year? Why, why is it like that and not the 7 million on the municipal side?
Uh, that's a good question, Councilman. I, I can't answer it. I, I've never worked for a rating agency. I, I can't tell you. I, if you go on their website, you can read some of their, their methodologies, et cetera, et cetera. But they, they take the general fund in by itself, because if the Board of Education did have a crisis and they needed to come back for funding, um, I, I think the first thing that they would do, because they, they do this every month at their finance subcommittee meetings. And Mr. Chertel and Mr. Testa and Mr. Marone, I believe, were all part of that body at one time, so they can attest to this, I believe. Uh, you know, they will scrape monies from certain line items or object codes to other ones that they have had some adverse um, uh results during a fiscal year, or as the fiscal year progresses. But if they had absolutely nowhere else to go, uh they'd have to come back to uh the mayor and the council, just like any other department would be, and say, hey, folks, we need to have some funds appropriated because, you know, we're bone dry and there's nowhere else we can go. That's probably the only thing I can, I, I can answer to, to that, Jason.
Yeah, no, and I appreciate it. I, I didn't necessarily expect that you, you might have a definitive answer, but I mean, I, I look at it from, from But I mean, I, I look at it from, from our perspective, the council's perspective and what we're doing here. In that, you know, we've got a general fund balance that's $28 million. And of course portions of it are already designated, allocated, and there's only so much that really sits quote unquote available or leverageable. Um, and, and this is where that, you know, designated reserve comes from. But there's still more there that we can leverage. And that's all that it is. When we, when we leverage it for the allocation and we don't use it. And, or, or even in the years we've partially used it. It's, it's not like the entire thing is going to waste. It's not like the entire thing is being consumed. And it gives us an opportunity to let these things settle out, even this year. You know, many of the years that we put these budgets together, we, we don't know what we're getting from the state. So we, we budget a certain way and we don't count on the money. And, you know, the state says we're getting two million, we get 1.5. The, the, the state says, the federal government says we're getting 1.2, maybe we get 1.3, or maybe we get 700,000. But we generally don't count on any of it, which is probably a smart thing to do. Or we earmark it very low, even if we do say, well, we'll assume that we're getting a floor of 300,000. But we're not going to count the other 2.5 million because we don't know if we're actually going to get it. Many times I've seen those numbers as zero. They've come in and go, we don't know yet. Hartford hasn't decided, so we're not assuming any of it. And then the money arrives. And it's, it's basically set up to roll into the general fund. Because we've already built all the line items, we funded everything with the budget, we counted on getting zero. And we got gravy because it was like we got it. We were never sure about it and it's now just there. We've got all this funding that is still in flux coming in from COVID, coming in from the federal government, coming in from Hartford. And I agree with the mayor, totally in agreement with the mayor. Uh. The, the amount of, let's just keep throwing money at it, it's becoming a problem at the federal level without a doubt. And Hartford's following, and these are all my people. So I mean, I'm throwing my whole party under the bus. But we, we, we're reaching a point where this has to stop and I agree. At the same time, we also know that a lot of these departments are returning monies in this current budget. It's just that the budget's not closed yet. So I think the risk. Of allocating more funds and actually consuming them are low. And even if we did do a consumption level of some of it on the historical degree what we've had. Even if you wanted to go to the top number, we'll go to 1.7 million back in 2005. If we actually consume that from the designated reserves. I suggest by looking at the documentation that you've sent us, we're probably going to surplus this current budget when it closed by more than that. So what I'm basically trying to communicate to everybody is this is another year where we look at if there was ever going to be a, a year to give this a shot. Take a look at this. This is the year. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yep. Yep. Mr. Chairman, Jim Boz again. Um, and I'm glad, Councilman Zandry, I'm glad you brought up, uh. One of the instances, uh, of a shortfall in state funding. Uh, one of those years that you were, um, that you had mentioned, where we actually went from seven or 4.2 or something like that million. Utilization of the reserves up to 7 million, uh, in that one budget year. Um, was a year in which. Uh, state of Connecticut. Balanced, well, I shouldn't say balanced their budget, adopted their budget after most municipalities did. Which happens, uh, frequently, it's, and it's usually not a big deal because the changes aren't usually drastic. That year, however, they, uh, they reduced our, our education cost sharing grant, I believe, 2.9 or $3 million. So the fact that we had those monies in the, uh, reserve, if you, let's just use the term reserve. Um, actually helped us. Not have to go back to the school board budget like, and, and I'm sure you folks remember the news stories. It was all over Connecticut news channels and newspapers. That most municipalities went back and took that out against their school system. And I, I actually hate when that happens because. The education cost sharing money and what we spend on education frankly, are not as related as folks think. Uh, but anyway, that's a different discussion. Oh, but the, the fact that we had those funds in the free fund balance, the free reserves allowed us to. Uh, provide, I use the word flexibility before, so I'll use it again if you don't mind. Uh, the flexibility to come and say, okay, well, let's boost this up to $3 million, another $3 million. Because we have it, we've been going down on our utilization of it over the years. Uh, because you're correct, we started, when I started here with seven and a half million dollars. I worked with you folks on the council, um, councils past and council present. As well as the chief executive sitting next to me here. The, sort of wean us off of that every year and get that down to a million or two. That was my goal. Uh, and we do that at the same time by boosting up some revenues and maybe, uh, being a little bit more conservative on expenditures. And then we meet somewhere in the middle where we're happy. I was never happy when I started here at seven and a half million. I'm afraid of it. I'm not happy now even at six point. But what that extra three million that year was, uh, and I'm glad you remembered it, Jason. Uh, is that it helped us not have to do some draconian cuts. To the school budgets, like I'm, like many, many towns, towns that are much wealthier per capita. Than, than, than Wallingford. I mean, we're, I remember, uh, hearing and reading about, uh, West Hartford and Glastonbury and, and towns such as that. Who went back and took out, took it out on the height of the school board budget. But like I said, like was misdirected. Uh, and or they just jacked up the local property tax rate, uh, or a combination of the two. So we were fortunate that, that we don't have, so that is one case of why we, we try to have that fund balance. The free fund balance that un, unassigned is what it's called now. Uh, is strong, if you will, I just use the word strong. We can, you know, we can talk all night about what level it should be at, et cetera, et cetera. But, um, but that was one utilization of that, which I think really benefited the community. Allowed the mayor and the town council and even the superintendent of schools flexibility that many towns did not have.
So, and I agree with you and, and that's a very good point. You know, we, we, we designated 3 million additional dollars. We, like you, like you mentioned, and I had mentioned earlier, 4.2 to 7.2. And we actually spent 1.5 of it that year. So there's, there's two things to look at there. So yeah, so of 7.2, we jacked it up 3 million extra dollars and we only ended up using a million and a half of the 3 million jackup. So that's, that's, you know, that's again bonus and good points to us. On, on the negative side of that discussion, one of the reasons they hit Wallingford, the way they hit it is they looked at us and said. They got a bucket of cash, they were going to be able to survive their type of hit that we're going to send to them better than one of those other towns. And this is not an argument to go spending down the cash. But, but again, it goes back to, it's great to be in a good position. And even better to be in a great position, but at the same time. There, there's a, a level of review that, that we really should be looking at. And, and to the, to the point of making even this motion. It's not the full, it's not a full monte, we're not wiping out all of the increase or the change. And, and if you look at the 1.5 million dollars in, in the, in the view of the, the view that I'm doing it, me solely alone. I'm looking at the fact that we are going to probably close this budget with more of a surplus than that. So even the overallocation this, of, of those monies is going to be erased from. What we're going to end up closing these books on and be reviewing this December.
Mr. Chairman.
Mayor.
Yeah, I. Ultimately, it's a question also of. Again, the discipline of the community, the principles we use in making decisions. Uh, in my opinion, the higher we get and re, the higher the number goes, we're relying upon from reserves. In order to deal with basically operational costs and another budget. It's more risk. Because the greater reliance, the more you're, you're at a point that you, you, you may be beyond the point that you can. Keep steady balance. Ultimately, that can and will affect the continuity of services. I don't think there's a need to increase risks. But everyone makes their own judgment. But, and again, as trustees, I don't think it's our job to increase the risk.
Next up, Councilor Marone.
Uh, thank you, uh, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. And so. You know, I'm going to, I want to go back to something that, uh, Councilor Zandry said a little while ago. And that is that, you know, managing other people's money doesn't just have to do with. Um. How you spend it, but also how you tax it and what you do with it, uh, when, when you've done it. So the public may be comfortable with the budget process and with all this. Clearly a preponderance of the council is not. So every time we ask questions about this, we talk about the state and the federal, who we know is a mess, right? And no one's going to argue, argue differently than that. Um, but the council ends up taking these sort of stabs in the dark, uh, efforts to, to control what we think is controlling the budget. Right? Like, I'm not sure if I agree with this motion or not. Cause I, I'm not certain that I understand all the, all the particulars and I understand that the administration's uncomfortable with it. But I think the stab in the dark comes from not having a, a clearly defined strategy, at least not one that the council can understand. So I, I guess my question with the administration is what is the strategy? Cause if the strategy is just to continually like, um, have the same tax rate every year or a consistent tax rate. So you avoid the big tax rate and you just set the money aside. I may not agree with that strategy, but that's a strategy. So my question for the administration is what is the strategy towards taxation and this pot of money over the long term?
Well, the, the strategy is to, to be able to maintain a, a, at least a 10% reserve as, as, uh. Basically looked for by the credit rating agencies. It's to provide the funds necessary to continue the services that we continue to provide. Um, analyzing all the time what services we need and what, which ones maybe we don't need. But, and then keeping an eye on what's happening with the economy, the sources of revenues, et cetera. If, if all kinds of new revenue started coming in, that were not just one time, but. We, we wouldn't be having as large increases in budgets. If we, if we receive millions of dollars, uh, new development or whatever, and it comes in. There, there may not be a tax increase because we would be able to meet the increases of, of the cost of providing services with the new revenue, a lower mill rate. So it's always working with, the, the, the plan is working with what we have. And seeking to continue service levels and trying to be as reasonable and, and as affordable a place to live. And reassure people that we're managing their assets properly. I, I think that is a plan and I, and I think we, all of us, council, mayor, et cetera. We've all been successful in doing that. But that, it's, it's, it's not a cookie cutter, but it's analyzing a multitude of variables and enabling us to maintain a stability.
Um, if I may follow up on that, Mr. Chairman. And, and you know, Mayor, to your credit, when, uh, when Scott Hanley retired. Uh, and you had indicated that you may not fill the position. A, a number of my fellow counselors kind of had a meltdown about it, about how important the role was and so on and so forth. I think we all know that broadcast television is a dying, uh, is a dying thing, right? We're sort of on the, the dying embers of broadcast television. And so I applaud you for making a decision like that, because I thought that was sort of a new approach to something where the council wasn't necessarily with you on it. I think the fire departments are the opposite situation where maybe we've gone in, in a direction that we shouldn't have, and now we're trying, trying to fix it. But I think you have a handle on that situation as well. I guess my thought is on taxation, I would just like to take more of an approach to the, to the Scott Hanley, um. Approach, and that is that let's analyze is, is this, the way that we've been doing this, is this how this really needs to be done in the future? Um. Taxes in town, I think have remained fairly steady. And I think that we're, I think 15 years ago, our taxes were low compared to our surrounding towns. I think it's been creeping up over time. And I understand that some of that is industry leaving and some of that is just, you know, um, having a handle on salaries and whatnot. But I guess specifically with regard to taxation. How you set, so the mill rate always, I'd be, obviously revenue versus expenditure is an easy formula, right? You know, you need to get, get enough taxes, bring enough tax money in to cover the expenses. But we always seem to have extras. So what's the administrative philosophy with regard to the extra, um, in the taxes every year?
Well, you know, that's, the extra is not, it's not necessarily built into the tax rate. There are revenues that come in, they're unexpected. Some of the COVID revenues certainly will be unexpected. Um. But then you have to be wary of it because then it, it won't return again. So how you spend them becomes a question of how much. Ongoing liability you have to continue to fund that money, which would, which would mean an increase in, in taxes. So depending upon the type of revenue, you have to be careful about how you ultimately fund it. But. What, what, what generally is the most dominant feature is what services do we want in the community? And if we're, if we choose to continue with the same range of services. The cost of those services continue to go up because of all of the things we're aware of. Salaries, benefits, um, costs of, of maintaining any, any kind of existing situation seems to always go up. So unless, unless new revenue is coming in. It, you, you either have to cut the services. Or you have to increase the revenue. So where you can, it's one time revenue, you know, you're careful with it, but the most dependable revenue comes from taxes. Because that's repetitive. And it's always a balancing. You try not to go too far out of line with spending because then it becomes a reoccurring expense. And people are, are naturally wary and, and even upset about that. But it's, it's a constant balancing, it's a constant juggling that, um. I, I don't think there's one way to do it. But over a period of time, the credit rating agencies certainly get a sense of what are the principles? What are the, what's the philosophy of those who are making judgments for the community, what they're like? And, and they form an opinion about what kind of, of, uh. Financial stability they think there is there and they tell creditors who would be investing in us what they think. But other than that, it's really a matter of, of, uh, us, us looking to. Provide what the community needs, a sense of stability, a, a sense of continuity. And. Not looking to overtax. By the same token, not staying away from overreliance upon one term revenue.
I'm all set. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your muted, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much. Uh, that's all I see in comments from the council on this motion. Uh, given opportunity to the public. There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishbein. Laughen. Morel.
Yes.
Morganstein.
I think Laughen was gone. Did we hear Fishbein's vote?
He's not on anymore.
He's not on, okay, I'm, I'm voting yes.
Shortell.
Yes.
Tada.
Yes.
Testa.
Yes.
Zandry.
Yes.
Chairman Sirvani.
I vote no, but the motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just want to make sure I got the motion correctly for when I do the summaries for you folks for Tuesday night's meeting. Uh. If I've gotten this incorrect, please someone straighten me out. Okay, the motion is to, uh, reduce. The current property tax revenue line item by 1.5 million dollars. That's page nine, item 41006. And to increase the revenue. And to increase the revenue utilization of fund balance, which is also on page nine, by the same 1.5 million. And that is line item 49010.
I believe that's correct. Counselor Todd, it was your motion. Can you please confirm?
Um, I'm not, I'm not sure where the re, where was that reduction again?
If we're gonna use 1.5 million dollars more of fund balance in line item 49010, the off, the offset to that is that you don't need 1.5 million dollars in current property taxes, so we can reduce that line item by the same 1.5 million. And that's line item 41006, which is also on page nine of the revenue side of the budget. In essence, and that will translate to a lower mill rate.
Yes, correct. I'm sorry, I was looking at the wrong, I was looking at 41106. Yes. Yep, you're correct.
I was pretty sure that, that's what everyone was looking for, so I just wanted to confirm it, and Vinny Testa gave me the thumbs up, so that makes me feel good.
Yes, thank you.
Thank, thank you. Thank you.
So I, I believe earlier in the chat, Counselor Testa indicated he had a motion.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm sure this will generate potentially an equally lengthy discussion, but let me just first explain my intent. And if we can get there, fine. How we get there again, fine. I know that there is, well, first of all, I do need to ask one clarification of Mr. Bose, if I may. Should have clarified this better during the hearings. I hope it's, you know, it's not out of line. On next Tuesday's meeting, well, I couldn't have asked this before, our bonding ordinance for 2,107062, how does that relate to this budget? Does it?
That is the, that is the amount of the authorization action by the town council for next year's portion of the six-year capital plan, which is the Cap and Non-Recurring Fund.
Okay.
Yeah, the ordinance, if, if I may, Mr. Testa, just for a second.
Yes.
We get, and we get asked the question all the time, as to, you know, why are you going to bond that if your intention really isn't to bond? The charter does have provision with regards to the, the Cap and Non-Recurring and/or the six-year capital plan, and it refers to items that would be bonded. That is one reason, obviously, why we, we get a bond authorization. But also because, you know, and it's also a very open process where it gives the public chance to, to opine as, as well as council members. So I hope that helps.
No, I just want to make, I wanted to confirm for myself that that was, obviously, if we made changes in this budget, the bonding ordinance would have to change. So it's an anticipation of us, my question is, well, we will, will we have approved the budget by the time that agenda item comes up? We will have, correct?
Good question, Ben. A good question.
We will have had to.
The bond ordinance for the Cap and Non-Recurring, the 2,100, it will not change based upon the action you took for the $60,000. $60,000 is, is staying within the general fund.
No, 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 I think that's the budget in general. We, we have to prove the budget.
Correct.
A budget, so that that particular page is set. I'm, I'm all good. And I know next week, we can have the philosophical discussions of why are we bonding when we might have the money, and I'm sure that'll happen next week. That's not for tonight. I simply wanted to verify in my own head that that ordinance is to address the projects that are in the Cap and Non-Recurring Plan along with administrative expenses, so I'm good. Now.
That's correct, that's correct.
Thank you. So here's, here's what I want to do, folks. I want to be able, we know that we have, we have the pilot, call it the Electric Division Pilot Contribution, which has recently been adjusted by 60,000. That's fine. In the budget, it shows as 1841747. And somehow, it also shows as 1781062 on page 23. We can discuss that later. Basically, we have the Electric Division Contribution coming over into next year's budget. The intent is to use that for capital projects. We also know, and we've been discussing at length over the last month or two, that there is approximately 1.8 million dollars in remaining money in the, in the Capital Non-Recurring Fund from leftover projects, which can be utilized for any number of things to be determined. And we also determined that it's very soon that number will probably increase to about 2.4 million. The specific, exact figures are not really relevant to my point, but the money's gonna be there. We've talked about how we might use it, how we can use it, and but the fact remains, once the money is put into that fund, it is then in a, in a place where it requires the administration and the council to both agree on how it will be utilized and if it will be utilized. Once it's there, we all know it's gotta be used for capital projects, but it requires the mayor's recommendation and our approval. So there's approximately 2.1 million dollars. There are approximately 2.1 minus administrative expenses of projects to do in next year's budget. We could have those projects done with that money that's already in the capital fund as the reserve money, the extra money that's sitting there. The mayor just simply has to, in my understanding, recommend it, request it, and we need to authorize it, a reauthorization of those funds for the projects in this year's budget, which, if we, if we were to do that, we, the projects would be done with money we currently have. So I was going to suggest at some point, I would like to see that money promised to, for example, as a down payment or a partial payment, or at least a fiscal, fiscal commitment to do the community pool project. But as I said, that requires and I that the administration choose to request that, and that we have to authorize it. What I would suggest instead is that we take the money from the pilot, the Electric Division Contribution, and transfer it over into a general fund account, create a new account, and call it what you will, community pool, down payment, whatever you want, instead of contribute, putting that money into the Cap and Non-Recurring Fund. There may be an argument against me now that by ordinance, that the pilot from the Electric Division has to go into that fund. I don't think that's true. It has to be used for capital projects, of which the community pool would be. So in effect, what I want to do is say, let's use the money we have sitting for community pool, or commit it to community pool. Keeping in mind, when we do community pool, we could still end up bonding the whole thing, and revert this money to some other capital projects that would make everybody happy. But what it does do is it philosophically commits us to doing community pool. There is a commitment on the part of the administration and the council that we're gonna do it. And we've committed some money to it. And then when we, just as we bond, we do a bonding ordinance, and then we use capital, we use cash, or vice versa, we can do what we wish. But if we make that commitment in our budget that we're going to do community pool, I think that's an important point to make. So we take this money, we assign it to a special fund that we create, call it Down Payment Community Pool, just like a pumper, year one, whatever you want to do. We know that the Capital Non-Recurring Projects in the budget can still be funded with money that is sitting in the Capital Non-Recurring Fund right now, so nothing has to suffer. And the way I'm suggesting it, logistically allows us to do what I believe with, and without putting the pilot money from the Electric Division somewhere where then it may not eventually be used, as I'm suggesting. But by putting it into a specific fund now, we're committing to do that. Lengthy, but I believe necessary to make my point. So I guess what I would do, I will leave the logistics of how to use, how to fund the capital projects with reserves to others. I would make a motion that we create a fund account for the renovation of community pool and transfer the money in line item 41190, Pilot Electric Division, into that fund for that purpose.
Second.
So how about it? Thank you.
If you're taking, Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, if you're taking 1.8 million dollars out of that revenue and you're sending it somewhere else, then you've got to, you got to kill the whole contribution to the Cap and Non-Recurring on page 23 to balance it. If not, you just call it a 1.8 million dollar tax increase. Correct? Do we know that?
I forgot about that part. Okay. I, we also still need to address how to fund the capital projects, don't we? On paper.
The ones that are listed on page eighty-something and Cap and Non-Recurring, right?
Yes.
On the streets.
Yeah. And that's an expenditure, and there has to be a revenue to offset it.
There is. The, the revenue is the pilot from the electric, plus some grant money that's been designated for those projects by the state of Connecticut.
Right. So that's, as I said, the specific numbers and logistics of how to accomplish what I've suggested, I'm sure would require your input. What I'm asking is, is it, can we create the revenue line to replace the Electric Division Pilot from reserves?
I think the cleanest way to go about trying to do that, then, is to suggest a change through the Cap and Non-Recurring Fund only, and let's say utilization of fund balance of the Cap and Non-Recurring Fund of, let's say, I don't know what you want to throw out there. Just throw a million out there for discussion, right? I, I don't mean a million, but a million dollars. And then you're gonna, so that's gonna increase the revenue side of the Cap and Non-Recurring, right, on page eighty, page eighty-three of the budget book, which shows the revenues. Right? All right, so that'll be, that'll be, that'll be increased by this, in my example, just throwing out there, that'll be increased by a million dollars. And we would claw that line item up in the revenue section of page eighty-three, utilization of Cap and Non-Recurring Fund Balance, 1 million dollars. And then on the bottom of that, and, and on the project page, which is page eighty-four, and also on the bottom of page eighty-three, to make the whole thing balanced, pool, community pool fund, or something like that, 1 million dollars. Now, that's the cleanest way to put it. It's all in there. It's showing everybody that it's the utilization of the fund balance, and you're not getting all into the gyrations of how the general fund and the electric pilot works together in conjunction with that. That's, that's what I think would be nice and clean.
Yeah, I just realized the description on page eighty-three says contribution from general fund, and then in parentheses, it says pilot. So you could, you could just, you could write it out with parentheses, because technically, the Cap and Non-Recurring Fund Reserve is overall still in there, correct?
That's correct. We would, we would, we would use another, we would use another line item called use of Cap and Non-Recurring Reserve or Fund Balance. That's correct.
So I need to amend my motion to also account for a reduction of that 1841747 from revenue where? I've just forgot. You just said, I need to also make a, a offset. Where would I do that?
No, you're not, you're not gonna, you're not gonna, you're not gonna touch the general fund at all. You're just gonna stay on page eighty-three and page eighty-four, which is the Cap and Non-Recurring Fund.
Okay.
And you can make the motion. So now, however, we're looking up the ordinance right now, Vin, just to see from a, a legal aspect, the mayor is looking that up now. To change the Cap and Non-Recurring Revenues by adding, let's say, any amount that I said, a million dollars, just to, for that example, use of fund balance of the Cap and Non-Recurring Fund, and then increase your expenditures pool, or something, transfer it to pool fund or something to that. So this way it would be balanced in the Cap and Non-Recurring Fund, and how it's worked the way through the, to the general fund isn't gonna matter. You know what I mean? Because you're still bringing in the money from the electric pilot, the general fund.
Right.
So you don't have to mess with that. You don't have to mess with that.
Got it. Creating it, it's a revenue on page nine. It will become an expenditure once this new fund is identified or created as a line item, or however you identified in the budget. And you'll make, and then it's, it's a, it's a descriptive alteration to explain where the money for the Cap and Non-Recurring Projects is going to come from, and everything still balances out, correct?
Yes, but we're not gonna be touching the general fund pilot revenue, because we, we really don't need to. You already have 1.8 million or 2, 2 million dollars of free fund balance in a Cap and Non-Recurring Fund. And after, I believe, unless I'm misunderstanding you, that's what I believe you're trying to get to, the, the reserves that are in the Cap and Non-Recurring Fund.
Yes, it's precisely what I want to do.
But just keep it right on page eighty-three and eighty-four within the Cap and Non-Recurring Fund, and don't worry about the pilot stuff.
Fantastic. So I think in, in principle, you know, philosophically, whatever you want to say, I believe everyone knows what I'm trying to accomplish. Use the money we have on hand to pay for next year's Cap and Non-Recurring expenses, and attribute the new contribution to a down payment for community pool. With the understanding, if it comes time to do the pool, we can use it to bond the whole thing.
I don't think you can put it. So we're looking at to see if, if the Cap and Non-Recurring could be, can be changed now, because the ordinance has been written. And I don't know if we have time to legally post the public hearing.
No.
Hold on, hold on, Vin. We're looking, we're looking up something.
Sure. Well, perhaps we can have the discussion to see if there's any interest in even approving this idea, because if there's none, then we don't have to put the administration through the mental wrangling of deciding how to do it if it's even allowed. Or not.
All right, Counselor Chertel, you seem to want to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I, I, I like the spirit or the intent, Counselor Testa's motion. I'm concerned about the dollar amount. Let me, you know, I, I feel like, yes, we are gonna, based on the, the, the report we had from the controller, another 600 is gonna go into the Cap and Non, of more closed-out projects. We know that, you're right, so that's gonna get to 2.4. I guess my concern is, does it have to be the 1.8? You know, we also know, we got a memo this week about a generator that's gotta go in at Sheehan. No, I don't know, I'm assuming there's been no indication of how that's gonna be paid for, but my assumption was that would, that would be, I think the, the amount of installation, the, the cost of the installation of that generator was in the neighborhood of 300,000 or 400,000, which I would assume, this is one of those weird expenses that comes up, would be ideal for either CRA funding or Cap and Non-unassigned. So I, I guess where I would, I, I don't want to vote again. I, I don't want to vote against this, because I've been a big supporter of the pool, but I struggle with the dollar amount. I, I think, you know, if it were 600,000, I would feel more comfortable, and, and on two levels. One, it wouldn't drain the whole 1.8 that's in there. But two, there'd be some basis for it. If you remember the project, the, the bid, the contingency amount of that bid was about 600,000. And I know several of us questioned, both publicly and some offline discussions, you know, contingency, yes, you, you build in 10% contingency on, on public works projects, but you're digging a hole where there's already a hole. Like, you're not gonna uncover a Native American burial ground. Like, you already, there's already a pool there, so. And I was told off the record, I won't, that, that, yeah, that there were several people in the know who felt that contingency was too high for the project, that it was sort of a thing we just did, but you, they really didn't expect it to, to amount to that much. So, so I feel like what you could do is you could put aside a chunk like 600,000, which is, which would cover the contingency. It's still a big chunk of money that, that represents the commitment that you're looking to do. But it also doesn't drain down the, you know, what's in the Cap and Non. That, that's my, that's my reservation with it. You know, I mentioned the CRA funding. Um, you know, I mentioned the C, the CRA funding, that's gonna, I don't know what's left of that money, that money's gonna be gone soon. And when that money's gone, all we have left is what's in cap and not on assigned for those types of expenses, so I, I, um, I'm all for trying to use that money. I just don't know if I want to use it all in one shot, and I understand that if, you know, okay, if we don't do the pool, or if we bond the pool, I should say, the money kind of comes back, I, I don't know, I, but that's just, um, just some thoughts, I love the concept, I'm just worried about the dollar amount. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, um, back on, um, uh, Mayor speaking. There are some costs that I'm aware of, and one of them you just mentioned. Uh, uh, there's, there's another potential in Oakland space, but, um, in looking at the ordinance, it appears to me that in order for money to go into the cap and, cap and non, it does require administrative recommendation. Um, and, uh, but in order to put the money instead of it going into cap and non, so some, if all or portion of the money from the electric division, that could be appropriated to a, a, a capital fund, there currently is a capital project, which is the pool. And I, I'm not, I'm not understanding why it, it wouldn't be able to go straight there. So it becomes part of that capital project, which would now be part of the budget.
I believe the cap, the electric pilot have to be, have to go to page for the six years. Yeah.
Um, say that again?
Doesn't the electric pilot have to go into the cap?
No, this is, this is various, um, various sources of amount.
Mayor and Mr. Bose, you're muted, I don't know if you intend to be or not.
Yes, I intend to be.
Shall I hold the floor for you?
Please do, sir.
May I respond to Counselor Chertel?
Oh, sure.
I can wait, I can wait.
I didn't say no.
Oh, no, okay, sorry. Did you say yes?
Okay, uh, yeah, we're just throwing some thoughts around here. Uh, and let's forget about what I said before, we, we, we got something that might even be a little bit cleaner. Uh, for example, uh, if you want to throw the example that Mr. Chertel, that you have six hundred brand, and, and I'm not trying to put, you know, on a mountain anybody's head here, but, uh, for example, you got that page twenty-three, which is the expenditure portion of the cap and non recur, uh, which goes to the cap and non recurring fund of the pilot, the electric pilot. So we will reduce that 1.7 or that, that 1.8 million dollars by, let's say, the six hundred thousand, create a new line item right below that, that says transfer to community pool project fund. We already have a bookkeeping fund for that, that we, uh, the council authorized. Uh, I believe the authorization was six hundred thousand to do the, uh, the architectural drawings and work, et cetera, et cetera. So we already have that, uh, uh, bookkeeping fund established, so we wouldn't have to do that again. Uh, and to do that, what, what Mr. Testa, I believe, and many, please correct me if I'm misperpetuating, is to take that, or a portion of that 1.8 million dollars, uh, and go directly to the community pool bookkeeping fund instead of going to the cap and non recurring. That's what I think would be cleanest, and, uh, my deputy is like drawing me notes here, so, and then, yeah, we think that that would be cleaner, and that's actually my deputy Tim's idea, so. If that's what you think, um, you were trying to, uh, voice there, uh, Councilman Testa, please, uh, let me know.
Well, it was, it's precisely what I was trying to do, so then the discussion now would just be, what's done the amount?
Exactly, exactly, and what that also, and what, and what also would happen, another result of this would be biting into, if you will, some of that reserve that's in the cap and non recurring fund. Because whatever you put into the pool fund will not go to cap and non recurring, therefore, uh, just by the very nature of the transactions of expenditures would exceed in the cap and non recurring fund the revenue from the pilot, then, uh, so you're sort of achieving that objective as well, and it's cleaner that way.
Okay.
I, I hope, I hope I didn't confuse anybody with that.
Me. That sounds good. May I make a quick comment, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Just for everyone's peace of mind as they go on with their discussion. I appreciate Counselor Chertel's comments, uh, the caution is, is well, is, is well advised. And I am, I'm okay with lowering my request. But I'm just, I'm gonna go with an even million dollars, so I'm gonna make a mo, I'm gonna amend my motion to the, to make the amount of the, what I'm asking to be an even one million dollars.
And I'll renew my second.
Now we can have the discussion on that. Thank you very much, everybody.
Next up, Counselor Tata.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, a couple things on this, number one, I, it seems, um, the Counselor Testa's intent is to kind of push the pool along to make sure it happens, um. But I, I'm not sure that this does that, only because I think the money could still just sit there. Um, you know, like, like Mr. Bose was saying, there, there's already money in there, um, you know, the council had approved and had in there, um, if you make it a capital item, you know, which we were talking about originally, it, it still doesn't mean that it's gonna happen, the money could still just sit there. So I think what, what you're trying to do is use money that's kind of sitting there and say, let's use this, let's use it for the pool, let's use it for a capital, it's sitting there, but I don't know that us putting this money somewhere else makes the pool happen, I think the administration would still have to support the pool project, so, um, you know, I, I understand the rationale, but I don't know that this is going to achieve the, the outcome, I think it's just kind of shuffling the money and earmarking it, but the council isn't, isn't going to force the pool to happen by, by moving it around, so, um, I'm just kind of, you know, thinking about that. Um, and then the other thing I guess we need to think about too is that it's still, um, you know, if we're using the, um, electric division money, you know, that's rate pair money, um, so it's still, you know, it's still some taxpayers, that's still those rate pairs, still basically the same people. Um, and I just want to make sure that, you know, a million dollars of rate payer money or taxpayer money is is something that the town really wants, because that, that is a huge amount of money that, that the taxpayers or the rate payers put in. Um, and like, like we've had with discussions of the pool in the past, um, I'm not a hundred percent convinced that the majority of the people in town want the, the pool, um. I'm necessarily against the pool, but we know from discussions in the past, I do, did have concerns about the price, I did have concerns about the new design being an eighth of the size of the original pool, so, um, I'm just trying to, you know, think, this is what's going through my head right now, so, um, I'm undecided, but I just wanted to put it out there, that's, that's kind of what I'm thinking, um, at this point, thank you.
You know, I, I think, to your point, Counselor Tata, the motion is a political statement by the council to earmark the money for the pool. And w- 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 not, and not to say that I agree with the political statement. But that is the statement that is, is being made by this motion. I don't know that it's the best way to get the pool built, it, it's a small fraction of the money that we need to get there, we're gonna be bonding for it anyway. Uh, and I don't know why we wouldn't do it that way in light of the fact that interest rates continue to be projected to be so low for an extended period of time, my understanding is that the Fed is projecting to keep interest rates below 2%, uh, potentially through next year, so, um, that's my thought. Uh, next up, I see Counselor Marone.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I could yield to Counselor Testa who had an answer, and then go afterwards.
All right, you can. Counselor Testa.
My only answer would be a quick one, well, we could argue that it may or may not be the will of the people, our job is to do our best to decide what we think would be in the best interest of the community, and it's unquestionable that by a vote of the majority of this council, there was support to do the pool project. Maybe not to override the mayor's veto of it, but there was a vote of six-three to go forward with the pool project, so there is support to do the project. Thank you.
Counselor Marone. Did you have enough yield time?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Counselor Testa, um. I think that the, so for me, the pool project goes back to sort of Wolford's, uh, working families roots. Um, you, you know, I mean, the, the, we've had a pool in town, if we did, if we never had a pool, we wouldn't be talking about the pool at all, so I, I agree with the spirit of Counselor Testa's motion 100%. Um, I, I think if you have concerns about the pool, then just say you have concerns about the pool, and let's not make this about something other than, uh, than just the pool, but, so I would support the motion, except that it, it, I'm supportive of the motion generally, my concern, I guess, is that the money gets set aside and then never used for the pool, and then it's sort of another way that we stockpile money. But I would be curious to hear from the administration's perspective, if money were not an object, would they be in favor of the pool or not in favor of the pool?
I don't live in town, so I can't use the pool.
I'll loan you my pool pass, Jim.
Only kidding, folks, just to throw some levity in. Go ahead, boy.
As I've stated earlier, I, your, your statement, Joe, that, uh, we have a pool, we do have a pool, we've had one, and it certainly would be good to be able to have a new pool. I'm troubled right now by the state of not only the health concerns, but also the economy as far as taking on that expense immediately. But, um, I, I, as, as a general rule, I, I, I like the fact that the town had a pool and am supportive, but timing becomes very important to me, um, and I, I, I just think there's too much uncertainty right now to take on a project like that.
So, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, to the mayor, what economic indicators, I guess, would, so, I mean, it's a possibility that we come out of COVID into an economic boom. Um, you know, such as after the, uh, the Spanish flu, so would, would there be an economic indicator that would tell you that you were ready to move forward with construction?
Certainly, economic indicators are important, I just, uh, was looking at a report today from the few charitable trusts that indicate disposable income in Connecticut. Uh, is that, oh, for the past year was a, a 0.6% increase. And if you take out subsidy from, from, uh, unemployment, other government subsidies, it drops to minus 1.8, I think, percent. Uh, Connecticut is about the lowest in the country regard to that as one of the indicators of what's happening, uh, in the economy and, um, as a result of many factors, but certainly partly COVID. So, uh, that, that, that's very troubling, a- and, uh, Don Cooper Smith is indicating that he thinks it's gonna be, it's gonna take time for the, for the state to start coming out of that. So, I mean, that's, that's what I'm aware of right now.
But thank you, Mr. Mayor, you know, in, in my estimation, the pool is a public service that we provide, not, it's certainly not as important as the police or fire, but I, I think it is a public service like any of the other parks that we have, so, so generally, I have been supportive of the motion, but I appreciate your perspective. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Testa, you, oh, you, your time was as a result of Counselor Marone's yield, so Counselor Morganstein is next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, yeah, so I wanted to, um, commend the fellows that are in support of this and Mr. Testa's idea. I think that it was maybe before Counselor Tata's time that we all agreed that part of what we would like to do in our budget seasons is to identify project money use that are things that we are all in support of, of, and so the fact is that, um, again, the mentioning of the six to three majority in support of the pool is really the reason to put this forward at this time and to take the money that is before it hits the reserve fund or the cap and non and say, this is what matters to us, this is community building, this is actually a project that if it gets done while we're still in a pandemic, you're doing work at a time where the pool can't actually be used, and then when the pool is able to be used, you have a community that is set to really come together, um, after all of this in a way that really is gonna benefit the community, so I just want to commend us, pat us on the back a bit of putting forward the idea of here's something that matters to us, here's something of value we can be proud of. Thank you.
That's all I have right now, uh, for comments from the council or the comments from the public. There appear to be none. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishby. Laughin. Marone.
Yes.
Morganstein.
Yes.
Chertel.
Yes.
Tata.
No.
Testa.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Chairman Sivoni.
I vote no, but there were five yeses before the motion passes.
Thank you.
Are there any other motions on the budget? Going once, going twice, going three times, seeing no further motions from the council on the budget, there is no further business on the agenda, and I declare this meeting adjourned.